All right. We'll get started with the March 15th Common Council meeting. Mayor Nieske will be joining us probably in about 45 minutes or so, so you're stuck with me to begin with. Looks like everybody is here tonight. Susan, so let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the consent agenda. I'll move to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mayor's business, we will postpone the mayor's business until Ted gets here. Officers and staff report, I don't know if there's any comments or updates from that. I did ask Susan to comment on the election because there's a lot going on there.
Yes, as usual, there certainly is. We are working on getting ready for the upcoming election on April 5th, which is a Tuesday, and that's the spring general election. At this time, the absentee ballots for the applications we had on file have already been mailed out. That was done so on Monday, so the individuals anticipating those ballots should anticipate those ballots arriving by the end of this week. Regarding in-person early absentee voting, which is held here at City Hall along with voter registration, I'll be running that on March 22nd through the 25th. That week, starting with Tuesday through Friday, will be 8:00 AM till noon at City Hall at the city clerk's office. And the following week, March 28th through the 31st, which is a Monday through Thursday, it will also be held here at City Hall at my office from noon until 4:00. And then on Friday, April 1st, it will be held here from noon until 5:00. Absentee ballots could also be requested through my vote as well as voter registration. That is the online system. Photo ID is required to either upload or be brought in with your application. And proof of residency for voter registration is always required as well. We're certainly willing to help anyone who has questions on that at my office. We could be contacted or come and see us. We will not be using the Dropbox anymore. That was something that was being done during COVID, and the procedures for elections at that point were relaxed to accommodate for the massive influx of absentee voting. We will not be using Dropbox on the outside of City Hall. That will be removed tomorrow. And anyone dropping off their absentee ballot needs to bring it to my office and hand it in in person. Each person should bring in their own ballot if they choose to that way. That's also required by law. Otherwise, when you've requested one, you get a return postage that's already placed on your certificate envelope, so you can certainly mail that back as soon as possible to allow enough time. And Election Day, polls will be open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. If you want to drop your ballot off on that day, I would suggest bringing it to my office. However, they can accommodate you at the polling location if necessary. Anybody have any questions they can think of at this point?
And Mike?
Yeah, so the Dropbox is going to be removed off the building, correct?
Yes.
So if you have a water bill or a fine that you normally would deposit in there, make arrangements to drop it off in the building or mail it in.
Yes, that will be encouraged. There'll be a signage put up on the front and the back of the building, so they can certainly bring it in. The finance department's right across my office. They have a box on the outside of their office on the wall. People frequently drop their bills off there. They can also go to the counter for assistance if they need that.
Dan? Just for clarification, Susan, if I bring in my absentee ballot, and I have my husband's absentee ballot as well, it is not legal for me to bring my husband's absentee ballot. He must bring it in as well?
Yes, that's the law states that the elector, which is the voter, needs to bring in in person their own absentee ballot. That's how the law states. So individuals that have done that in the past, they either should put it in the mail or the individual should bring it in. So it's a little bit of a change from what they are used to through the past two years. They were able to do so a little differently. But this is what's required at this time, and this is the procedure we'll need to follow unless it goes to court and something else has changed, which could happen down the road. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions or comments?
I've got one. Dan?
If you haven't read the article or the link that Rob put in for the Valley Creek Resilience Sea Planning, I recommend you do that. I found that was outstanding. I think Tom Malato was part author of that or one of the authors of that. And secondly, the housing report is typical SewerPac. There's more data packed into that than you can ever absorb. But I have to tell you, it's an awfully good start for our revised zoning code when we get into doing our zoning code, because that report is about as detailed, and it'll be filed every, it'll be done every year, January 31st. Is that right, Bob? Or every other year? What is the?
I hope it's every other year. It might be every year, but SewerPac should confirm later.
Isn't this the first one we've done? Because we just passed 10,000 population. Okay. But if you haven't read it, it's worth a couple hours of your time.
It's now time for public comments and appearances. Your comments are welcome. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you need more time, contact the city administrator and ask that your topic be placed on a Common Council agenda. I'm going to wave because I don't have a fancy timer with a noise maker on it, and I know, Pat, you asked for a little bit more time, so we're good on that one. So if you'd come to the podium, make sure the mic is on and identify your name and your address, and then give us your comments.
Okay. Most of you know me. My name is Pat Morsey. I was the founder of Family Promise here in Ozaki County. And my husband and I housed a homeless woman who we did not know and her dog for nine months. So affordable housing is very close to my heart, and thank you to SewerPac for being here in Port Washington tonight. Is this SewerPac over here? Who's?
No, they're going to be remote.
They're what?
They'll be remote.
Oh, okay. I'm aware that the regional housing plan of SewerPac 2035 was adopted in March of 2013. The plan includes 50 recommendations, including affordable housing for households of all income levels, and it states, and this one I'm going to quote, "Wisconsin's planning law requires that a local comprehensive plan, including a housing element." The law defines the housing element as follows, again quote, "A compilation of objectives, policies, goals, maps, and programs of the local governmental unit to provide an adequate housing supply that meets existing or forecasted housing demand in the local governmental unit. The element shall assess the age, structural value, and occupancy characteristics of the local governmental's unit's housing stock. The element shall also identify specific policies and programs that promote the development of housing for residents of the local governmental unit and provide a range of housing choices that meet the needs of people of all income levels, of all age groups, and persons with special needs, policies and programs that promote the availability of lands for the development or redevelopment of low-income and moderate-income housing, and policies and programs to maintain or rehabilitate the local government's unit's existing housing stock," end quote. "Implementation of this regional housing plan would, among other things, help provide decent and affordable housing for all residents of the region, including Port Washington, help address the concentration of minority and low-income populations and increase diversity in our communities, support economic development by providing housing affordability to the existing and projected future workforce who work here and want to live in our city, help provide enough accessible housing to meet the needs of persons with disabilities, help provide enough subsidized housing to meet the needs of very low-income people. I am part of a group that was working with the city's DEI group that is working on a year-long plan to keep the dream alive of Martin Luther King Jr. King, as we know, was an adamant supporter of fair housing community and continued his fight until his murder in 1968. In recent years in Port Washington, we have seen the use of TIF funds for very expensive buildings, both for commercial use and for residential. The TIF law was approved by the Wisconsin Legislature as a means of promoting industrial development, mixed-use development, eliminating blighted areas, and rehabilitating deteriorating areas in a community. From what I and many residents are seeing, these four categories are not what the TIF money is being used for in Port Washington. I understand, and many do, that the erection of multimillion-dollar buildings adds incrementally to the tax base here in Port. But with fair and affordable housing lacking in our city, it seems that instead of having a both-and housing situation in Port, we currently have an either-or one that is locking out fellow human beings who cannot afford the high-priced housing available in Port. In fact, most of us who are sitting here tonight can probably not afford the new housing going up in Port. TIF does help to fund infrastructure and create incentives to promote economic development and job creation within our community. But what TIF money can also do, after a TIF district has paid all of its infrastructure and development costs, and before it is formally terminated, it can be repurposed for one additional year to benefit affordable housing and improve housing stock anywhere within the community. The Affordable Housing Extension Act, AHE, was added to the TIF law in 2009, but relatively few of the 600 cities and villages in Wisconsin have taken advantage of this option. In fact, I think there's only about 12 of them. Under a Wisconsin statute, a city with a TIF district that has retired its debt, paid all of its project costs, can extend the life of the district for one year. So I strongly urge the Common Council to take advantage of this affordable housing extension and begin planning affordable housing here in Port. There are many areas in our city that could be rezoned for multiple families, and thus housing could be built, where our fellow citizens would be protected, instead of having what we did have this past fall, families with children evicted, sent to other cities, and those children had to lose their placement in the Port Washington Saukville Schools District and be separated from their friends. So please do not continue empty promises for those who are most vulnerable. Begin the process of planning and building affordable housing for our fellow brothers and sisters who deserve the same rights of fair housing as do we and I. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Anyone else?
Amy Otis Wilborn, 2 through 3 East Pier. Thank you, Pat. That was actually very good. The city continues to misunderstand a large part of the community here in Port, really value and want to protect the lakefront. Not everything is about tourism revenue or multimillion-dollar housing. While the mantra for the north slip has been, "Our hands are tied," that does not hold true for the approval of a large barley silo and sign, or the extra five feet that you put on either side. So we're not sure what else is in the works. We just don't know. The timeline seems so fast, and we're not hearing about things until kind of after they're done. Forty people met, the organizers, at the police station on a Saturday morning and agreed to embark on a citywide petition to call for a referendum because they do not want public funding put in jeopardy in this particular project, the North Slip Project. And to be honest, the use of TIF as an incentive to developers who have access to prime lakefront property or downtown property is not supported by a good portion of the population. There remains a lot more property in the downtown area to be developed, and so we're a little bit nervous about what you all have in mind for that. Members of this group that met on Saturday all understand the ramifications of successfully delivering a petition to you all for a binding referendum, including the possibility that the Common Council will find another way to put public dollars into the project, albeit more expensive. This has never been about inventors. If you've been on the Community Voice, you hear people say people are against inventors. It has nothing to do with inventors. It started a long time ago. It's always been about a fair and open process that takes constituents' concerns seriously and does not misunderstand the value that residents put on their lakefront and their downtown property. I want to thank Mike Gasper, who actually joined in the Community Voice conversation, which has been very good and very informative, and provided factual information, good perspectives on what this particular petition is about and what some of the issues are. So I'm eager to also hear about affordable housing tonight in that report, and I'm also looking forward to the next meeting of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. I have not been able to figure out when that's going to actually happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Anyone else for public comment?
Hello, my name is Peter VanderVall, and I live on Montgomery Street here in the city of Port Washington. I share many of the same concerns that Pat and Amy alluded to earlier, so I'll just share kind of a personal story. My wife and I moved back to Port Washington about two years ago with our two young daughters. We moved back here for the strong community, the good schools in the area. There's obviously a lot that's desirable about Port Washington, and people want to live here, and people want to move here and work here. However, at that point in time, the housing market was very hot. We had to make, you know, an offer that we didn't necessarily feel comfortable making. You know, there couldn't be contingencies on the house, things like this. We had to offer well above asking price just to get a house in the city where we wanted it to be. Since that time, the housing supply has only shrunk in the city. I was just looking online, and there are a total of 11 houses for sale under $275,000 right now in the city of Port Washington. Five of these are condos with two bedrooms or less, so likely unappealing for a family such as mine. This represents the entirety of the current market for a family that would be making below the roughly $67,000 median income for Port Washington that we'll see in the SewerPac report tonight. Six houses for half the population, you know, to look for in the city of Port Washington. We also know that employers are hiring all over the city, but with limited housing and limited public transportation available, they are going to continue to struggle to find people. And while I understand that the city isn't a developer, the city council can do a lot to incentivize the needed development in our community to continue to see it grow and to continue to see us welcome younger families to the area. So I would encourage you to think outside of the box. Let's think about how we can incentivize development of affordable housing so that we can continue to see this wonderful community grow and be vitalized by young families, other people, people that make a lower amount of income that want to move here. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
I'm Kerry McKnight, and I'm at 906 Algoma Drive. And I guess what I'm up here for is to introduce myself as a person that's concerned about the movement of decisions that has been made in this room in regards to the development on the slip, the north slip, with the idea of, nothing to do with the fact that that isn't a good place for the concept. It's got everything to do with what Amy was referring to, is the amount of leniency that was given to the owner in regards to the heights and the different easements that were allowed to go left and right on the property. And Adam sat up here to answer your question in regards to that five-feet extension the last time I was here, and he adamantly referred to a need that he had to be able to operate the inside of his building for a profitable manner. He needed that five feet. Just to give you a fast understanding of the fact that, number one, I'm not a good orator, but I can read a pair of blueprints. I've been in the business of design and development for restaurants for 25 years, and for him to say that there was five feet that I had to have to put that onto the property line to take away the landscaping and the opportunity for people to enjoy the width, that would be nice going back and forth from the docks, wasn't quite upfront in regards to telling you gentlemen that he couldn't operate his business within that building without having that five feet. So that was one of the main things that I just wanted to bring up. I don't know if that's possible to reestablish itself, because any way you look at it, just having the ability to go back down, take a walk around in the area would be so much better if you're not having a building right up against the sidewalk, having some, you know, some greenery that would be produced if we had that five feet. And as John was saying, the fact that in the future, there'll be condos on the right side if you're going down to the lake, and who's to say that they're not going to want to move right over to that sidewalk? And so with not anybody listening to the planning commission's direction, I was disappointed on the vote at the time that you all made the decision not to make the architect to go back and reestablish that five feet, that if he was given the parameters to stay within and away from that property line, that's his job. And if he went beyond it, then that's an issue that's not professional. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll close out public comments and appearances and move on to standing council committees, Finance and License. Number one, update on 2022 Sidewalk Improvement Project bids. Rob, I think you've got that?
Yep. So the bid opening was a week ago Thursday. We had three bidders for this project. The low bid came in under our budget amount of $100,000. It's Primoris Electric. They do concrete restoration, usually in conjunction with larger utility contracts, but they're working with cities now to, on various concrete projects. So in any case, I checked their references. They came back good. And so the Board of Public Works awarded the bid to Primoris Electric last Tuesday, and so I've assembled the contracts, and we should be getting those approved next week. And I think they want to start working in the next couple of weeks, so I will keep the council informed on that.
Okay.
And they estimated it would take about four weeks to complete their work.
And again, this is for information. Are there any questions or comments for Rob? Thank you, Rob. Move on to consideration and possible action on bids for the 2022 Street Water and Sewer Improvement Project. Back to you, Rob.
Okay, and so this also was presented to the Board of Public Works last week Tuesday, and then to Finance Committee tonight. We had five bidders for this project, and the low bidder, Vinton Construction, performed the work two years ago and did a very good job on it, and so we're recommending award to them. The issue that we had to work through is that the project did come in over our original estimate when we were assembling the capital budget last year. And so I've requested a couple of capital budget transfers. One for $40,000 from the budget that we had attributed towards the engineering work for the lighthouse, pending a grant that we anticipate receiving. Also pending a grant we anticipate receiving from Fund for Lake Michigan for the box culvert design and the Valley Creek Stream Bank stabilization. We've been informed that we will be getting these grants, although we don't have the paperwork in hand yet, so that's why I had to say they were pending. The Finance Committee recommended that we make these budget transfers in conjunction with these three other revenue sources that I noted, one being from Newport Shores, one from DNR Recreational Trails, and one from the water utility, the Reserve Fund. So I think everyone's, I've gone through this, both at Board of Public Works and Finance Committee, so are there any questions? Finance Committee is recommending approval.
Rob, you said Vinton earlier, but the recommendation in the memo is PTS?
Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry. Yes, it was Vinton was last year. I'm sorry. It's PTS from.
It should be, so the what's in the memo is correct, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Dan?
So staff recommendations is the recommended.
Staff recommendations that recommend the PTS be approved for the 2022 Street and Sewer. Questions for Rob on the.
Yeah. Did we get a second? Or do we want to do a motion first?
Comment or questions first, and then we'll go to that.
So we got, what, Rob, maybe $150,000 in grants? I tried to add it up fast, and I wasn't very good.
Well, yes, yes, 100, we had, yes, it'd be $140,000.
So what we're saying is, because of all sorts of reasons, the economy, the supply network, the cost of fuel, lack of labor, I might as well blame COVID and Putin on top of that, but the reality is, we got $150,000 in grants, and we put it into the project. Did we consider not doing a portion of the project?
Well, that's something we could consider, yeah. And we did consider the, I would say, the portion of the project, if we were going, if we needed to pull out a portion of the project, I would recommend pulling out Orchard because it's connected to Holden Street, and when we reconstruct Holden Street, that's when I'd catch it. So that is the other option.
Are there other options that you considered?
Well, we talked about borrowing more. We talked about taking more out of TIF and decided that those weren't options that we wanted to.
I mean, spending less. Because what happens really is, we sort of negated the fact that we got the grants. We were able to do the work that we planned, but just like a household budget, maybe we should reduce our expenditure. Instead of having, you know, prime rib, we're going to have, can't have bacon. That's more expensive. We could have hamburgers. I guess my point, Rob, is, for example, there are certain items within the project of which I think are overkill, and we may be able to reduce certain items. I'll just throw one out, just for example, would be the sidewalk on the east side of Lake Street from Washington North. Okay? That's relatively expensive construction because of things we have to move and things we have to do. That would be an opportunity to save some money. Just for, that's just an example. You could pick two or three or four others, but what I'm saying is, we didn't trim our budget. We kept our project the same, and we used grant money that would have reduced the cost of the project to make up for it. I just want to be sure that that's the best decision.
Sure, and I guess my comment to that is, as far as the sidewalk goes, that's only about 100 feet of sidewalk. 100 feet of sidewalk. So we're not talking about, we're, we're talking probably less than $10,000 to, to put in that sidewalk. In fact, I would guess much less. I don't have the number figured out. And then, yeah, as far as other areas in the project, yeah, I, I guess I would say that it's, it's more of a meat and potatoes, uh, street project. I mean, we had talked about doing things like decorative pavers in the crosswalks. We're not doing that. We're not, we're not building it, we're not building the street with pavers. We're not building any of the sidewalks with pavers. We're, it's a, it's a concrete and asphalt street. And the main, the main overruns are not only the cost of materials, but also the replacement of storm sewer on Lake Street and removal of contaminated soil on Lake Street. There's really just no, no getting around those two items. So if, yeah, if there were, if there were wishes rather than the needs, I would, those I think would be the first to go. But I mean, some of the items, and, and, you know, we did talk about sidewalk, Tony and I, but, but really the amount, you, you, you'd still need to cut a lot more if you cut some of the sidewalk out of the project.
I'll use your words, Rob, if I could. We're going to design it for sidewalk, but we might not install it at this time.
Right.
In other words, it's not, not saying we're not going to do it, but maybe it isn't as pressing as maybe we thought it was.
Well, and we limit, eliminate, from the first time we looked at it, we eliminated probably about half of the sidewalk that we originally had had in the project. So we eliminated on the north side of Orchard, we eliminated it on the west side of Pierre, we eliminated it on the north side, I'm getting my directions right, the east side of Sock Road. That was those three places. So, yeah. So I mean, we did, yeah, so we did really look at where we felt it was most practical and, I believe, tried to, and, and of course, taking into account feedback that we got from the Board of Public Works. That's where we feel we've kind of hit the happy medium.
Tony? Other questions for Rob? If not, we'll look for a motion.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
One comment, Dan. As we'd mentioned before, the capital budget is fluid. We will be reviewing that throughout the year and making adjustments if needed. So if anything is reduced, other projects come under budget, it might help to fund. This is only a preliminary list of where Rob might be able to pull the funds, but ultimately it might not be from the grants as we review the budget going forward.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Moving on, consideration and possible action on a municipal advisory agreement with the Wisconsin Public Finance Professionals LLC for the issuance of 835,000 taxable general obligation community development bonds. Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item, along with four, five, and six, are related to the development incentive for the TBF development project. So I will go through the, these items, if you don't mind, all at once, if the council is okay with that. Okay. So there's really two financing vehicles that are be looked, being looked at. The first is bonding and the open market. And then the second is to issue debt with the state trust fund loan program. So for the first item here, it is related to a municipal advisory agreement with Wisconsin Public Finance Professionals LLC for them to act as our municipal advisor through the bonding issuance related to the $835,000 of taxable geo-community development bonds. And for those services which are provided by Carol Worth, the cost is $12,000, or, excuse me, $12,500. And then the second item following this one is for Corals and Brady to serve as bond counsel to fulfill that role with the same issuance. And the total cost for that is $9,450. Now separately is the parameters resolution for, for issuing a million dollars of debt with the state trust fund loan program, or, excuse me, that's, that's for the, the bonding. So the parameters resolution or resolution 2022-10, it outlines basically the parameters to authorize me as the authorized officer for the city to follow through with the issuance of the debt. And the parameters are as follows. The first is that the principal amount is $835,000. The second is that the maximum purchase price shall not be more than 103% of the principal amount. The third item is that the true interest rate cannot exceed 5%. And then the fourth item that I noted in the memo is that the petition period shall have expired without a sufficient petition being filed. And just as a note on that, the final day is this Thursday, March 17th. Then the sixth item on the agenda here, resolution 2022-8, is approving the borrowing through the state trust fund loan program of a million dollars. What that would do is, it would approve the resolution. And then from a process standpoint, if the council decides to approve it at a million dollars over 16 years at a 4% interest rate, we would submit the resolution to the state trust fund loan program. And then their board meets on the first and third Tuesday of the month, the same as the common council. And they would follow through and reviewing whether or not we are eligible and able to obtain that loan. And then shortly thereafter, they would notify the city. In both cases, whether it be the state trust fund loan program or bonding, the issuance or the timeframe in which we would undertake this effort would be over the next four to five weeks. So with that high level overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no questions, just procedurally, we will take these individually and have motion and a vote on each one individually. So for the first one, number three, staff recommends engaging Wisconsin Public Finance Professionals LLC for the issuance of 835,000 general obligation community development bonds.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Second. Go ahead.
Any questions on that? Any questions on that motion?
Just a, Tony, could you just clarify? My understanding is that we're doing this, we're looking at both of these things with the petition that's out there in mind. Am I right on that? Can you want to?
I wouldn't say that that was the primary reason. I think another reason that plays into it certainly as well is the current market conditions with just the current events that we're living with today, along with the, there's a Fed meeting that's supposed to happen pretty soon as well, where they're anticipated to increase interest rates. That's going to have a direct pack impact, at least in the short term, maybe in the long term, on interest rates for municipal obligations. So it's really looking at kind of not only the petition, but kind of other variables, variables that play into what the, the impact on the interest rate is that the city could end up experiencing as we issue debt.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Number four, consideration and potential action on the scope of engagement with Corals and Brady for the proposed bond issuance of 835,000 taxable general obligation community development bonds for the city of Port Washington. And again, the staff recommendation is approval on that one. Looking for a motion?
I'll take it. Move to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Resolution 2022-10, establishing parameters for the sale not to exceed 835,000 of taxable general obligation community development bonds. And again, the staff recommendation is to approve.
So move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And then resolution 2022-8, resolution approving the borrowing through the state trust fund loan program of $1 million for a community development grant. And again, the staff recommendation is approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Number seven, resolution 20-2022-9, a resolution authorizing the submission of a community development investment or CDI grant application to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for the Inventors Brew Pub project on the north slip. You, Bob, or?
Do a quick summary here. So late last month, I was informed that as part of their financing package, the developers of the north slip were applying for a CDI grant, which is through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation in the amount of $250,000. Discussing this with the WEDC, they were informing me that the nature of the grant requires actually the community, i.e., in this case, the city of Port, would be the applicant for this grant. And as part of that, if it's a grant, then obviously we need, we, a council approval by way of this resolution is required. And so what does that mean that the city is the applicant in this grant? Well, essentially, there's three components the city has to submit to WEDC by April 1st, and that is the community application, which is in your packet. It's essentially the, the one-page application page. There is a council-approved resolution authorizing submittal of the application and then a completed federal W9 form. There would be later on, if granted or approved for the grant, a developer's agreement would be needed. And this would just spell out the obligations of both what the city and the, the actual recipient of the grant would, would perform. In this case, excuse me, it's just spelling out that the majority of the reporting requirements would be for, on behalf of the developer, and that required outside auditor that would monitor the grant, that would be hired by, again, the developer. That's the, that would be two of the key components of the developer's agreement. Just the grant obligations and how it would work. If approved, the city establishes a dedicated fund for the grant award. Essentially, the city is a pass-through. It's a reimbursable grant, so as construction or development of the, of the building would go through, they would apply for reimbursement from these grant funds. It's similar to what the city has as far as its revolving loan fund. There are required performance reporting. Again, most of that will be the responsibility of the developer as well, as well as the hiring of an independent auditor. If awarded, and I mentioned, if awarded, we would need to have a specified developer's agreement approved by the council. But for the sake of the grant application, they provided a, I have a draft app, draft developer's agreement in the packet. And then I, there are representatives from the project here, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Bob or the development team?
Confirmation, if we did apply for this grant, and if we did get this grant, it's my understanding that any future grants would be very difficult to obtain. Is that correct, Tony?
In speaking with WEDC representative for the program, my understanding is in fact that, that if the city were to receive this grant, in all likelihood, in the next fiscal year for the state, or maybe the near term, next few years, the likelihood that the city would be able to obtain another one of these grants would, would not be as high.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, Mike.
So some of the reporting is to be done by the city, correct? Or, because you had said most would be by the Blues Factory, but I presume some by the city?
Essentially, we're submitting the reporting requirements. So we, the develop, my understanding is the developer gives us the reporting requirements and we pass it along.
So there's no significant time amount that city staff has to put into it, then?
There's some, but just by nature of the, of the, just the submitting of the reports. But I think it's, as far as, what I think it has to do is just bad in this, like, for example, processing the, the reimbursable request, too. But, and now, David, if you have any details to provide on that part, since it's not my, the details aren't with me.
The WEDC issues the CDI investment. The city has to make the request, as, as Bob indicated, WEDC reviews the application. And for disbursement, there will be the developer's agreement, which will spell out conditions of advance on the, on the draws against the grant. We are, involved in the financing package are the bank, the TIF agreement, and this proposed investment by WEDC. It's money issued by WEDC, and we've discussed the monitoring of the grants and verification of use of funds all through the title company, which is most likely going to be Knight Berry across the street. So any requests, as Bob indicated, the bank is the construction lender in the project in the interim. They must advance the funds first, then they're reimbursed through the grant or pay down the bank construction loan in accordance with the agreement. Yes?
Could I just ask who you are? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Dave Kircher. My company is Phoenix Financial Advisors. I've been working with Gurchon and Adam on the development of the package and putting the finance package together. I'm a retired banker from the original Marine Bank, MNI, and 20 years with Wisconsin Economic Development.
Ah. And I just have one question, I think of you, David. When I read through this, from when WEDC started this, how many years ago? Was WEDC formed?
WEDC, when the corporation was formed.
Twenty, maybe?
Yeah.
Right around there, right?
Scott Walker, Governor.
Scott Walker. It, it, it was terribly administrated at that time. When I looked through this, this was very carefully crafted. I guess my only real question is, I, I think we're allowed to get one of these a year? Is that right?
That's what they're saying.
Right?
It's likely the case, yes.
Right.
It's been, not, not been used.
Right. But it could be used for another project if it wasn't used for this project. That's, that's my point, okay?
Sure.
Seems to me we're a little late, maybe a little late in the game to be doing this, but somehow you just have to convince me that it's a needed part of the package. I think it's that simple, really. I think it's that simple, really.
It's an incentive that was presented initially when Gurchon first proposed the project, and we reached out to the sources, WEDC being one of them, and that provided a piece of gap funding that would assist in the project. And WEDC took it on board as the type, the use of these funds, this is the type of project that they like to use in a community like this. So it was offered, it was offered to us upfront.
Just one more, just one more comment. That's on top of the $835,000 incentive. It's on top of the $165,000 that was paid to stabilize the wall in the North Harbor. So it adds up to be an incentive of $1,250,000.
But this, this 250 is not city money.
It doesn't matter where it comes from.
Right.
It's money.
Understood.
So what you're saying is that this, this is, is, maybe it's not quintessential, but it is essential for the project?
Yes, it is.
Alvin, attorney, you had a contact. Okay. One, maybe the one.
So just so I understand, that these, this type of project, this type of loan, I should go say, has to be used for a development project or this type of thing? I'm wondering, it's not, if, the fact that we can't go, we probably can't go seek something, another one for a year or two years or whatever, is not likely to handcuff us with an important city project?
It's complicated.
I know, and then maybe it's.
Yeah, I mean, as I'm thinking about that, I maybe would frame it a different way as, as a question to the council, whether or not they feel comfortable moving forward with this grant application in the event that there's another development that comes along in the next, we'll say, year, two or three, that would be a candidate for this program. So I don't know if that directly answers your question, but.
But, I guess, so, but it does have to be used for some kind of, it almost is something that has to be used for a private development.
Yes.
Correct.
Can't be used for, you know, for something that the city would need or we want to do.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my only concern is that I can, I can imagine a particular development that we kind of would hope would happen downtown, that this would be very valuable for, but I have no confidence that that's going to happen in the next two, three, four years. But Murphy's Law says if we use this, then we're going to need it and not be able to get it.
I have to agree. I don't have a crystal ball, but I think the city's contribution for this particular project has been sufficient. I would prefer to not approve the grant for this, and hopefully have a project on the horizon that truly needs the funds, and we would have them available.
If I could maybe give some background as well. In, during the original RFP process and the discussions around the developer's agreement, the, the project uses at that time was an SBA financing, and that's how the project team got in contact with David Kircher. David is a very well-known SBA financing expert in southeastern Wisconsin. And David took our team, as well as the city's team, through the financing process of how to get a project like this financed. And David put together a memo dated March 3, 2017, to the city of Port Washington, and in that memorandum, he broke down the various uses and the various funding and the various grants that would be required to put the package together. Part of that uses was the, the purchase of the land for 250,000. That purchase of the land was actually a equity contribution by the developer to the city to buy the land. The city then turned around and used a portion of those funds to repair the dock wall. So there's been no funding by the city, other than the funding provided from the purchase of the, of the dock, of the land to repair the dock walls. Another component of the financing was the million-dollar TIF, which was approved subsequent to the sources and uses, because people had to understand why it was necessary. There was a 250,000 WEDC CDI grant as part of the structure at that point. It was approved at that point, was never used. So this was 2017, so that's five years, no one's used it. And then there was a 250,000 revolving loan fund approved as well, over and above, obviously, all of the additional equity and the lending. So, so the reason I'm bringing this up is that the $1 million TIF, the $250,000 CDI grant, the RLF funding, the purchase of the land, as well as the construction loan, that's, that package, that financing package, has been on the table and public since March 2017 with, with David's input. So I, no one's asking for anything different than what's been on the table all along, which is at the point now where we have to execute on the structure that was put in place.
Thanks, Gurchon. So Resolution 2022-9, a resolution authorizing the submission of a community development investment grant to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation for Inventors Brew Pub project on the north slip. And again, the staff recommendation is that we approve the grant application. Looking for a motion?
I would move to approve Resolution 2022-9, knowing that this city, this money is not coming from the city. This is WEDC money that will be lent, lent and paid back on the part of the developer. So in that regard, I would have to recommend, if there are any other, I think typically the CDI grants are awarded for downtown projects, catalytic projects, as it were. If there's any, sorry, if there's anything else Bob you'd add, but.
No, that's the intent of, of the grant that I've learned. It's for shovel-ready.
It's a grant, not a loan.
Shovel-ready downtown projects. Yeah.
Okay. Looking for a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, any discussion on the motion? If not, all those, oh, sorry, Pat.
I just, I just, so I get something clarified, so, and Gurchon mentioned this, so I don't know if we can get this from the city attorney. You, Gurchon, you said that the 250,000, this, the 250,000 CDI grant that you mentioned in your summary is the one we're talking about here. Is that, and is that our understanding as well? Was part of the original agreement? Sorry to spring that on.
No, that's fine. I have to rewind back to those days. No, it's not part of the written agreement. And whether it was discussed initially in the formative stages of those negotiations, I don't recall. I don't recall. I remember Mr. Kircher's name, but, sorry, Dave, I guess you're forgettable in that. Did we meet before or at that time? I think you were participated by phone, maybe, but I, I, I don't recall this piece. I'm not to say it wasn't discussed, but it is not in the agreement. It is not part of the city's obligation within the four corners of the development agreement. It is not.
And I guess relative to that, sorry, John. Tony, you want to talk about the, if this grant happens, the development agreement amendment that'll be needed?
So from a process standpoint, if this resolution is approved, that would give Bob the green light to move forward with the application. And then as a second step, a developer's agreement would come before this body at some point prior to the funds able, being able to be allocated for the project. So it's kind of a two-step process. So if the resolution is approved this evening, the follow-up item, our companion piece to this, is the developer's agreement for this specific funding piece.
Any other questions on the resolution, or on the motion?
I have one. And, give me a nod, yeah. Okay, am I talking to the mayor or am I talking to you? He's sitting right behind you.
I have an abdicated.
Okay, okay. Okay. I'm, I'm of the understanding that there will be negotiations at the time that the development agreement is provided. One of the items of negotiation would be compensation to the city for the work they're going to do on the grant. I mean, that's just logical, right? If we spend $250,000 and we negotiate it, maybe we get 198. My saying is I think that there is a point where the developer's agreement would then be an opportunity for that negotiation. Am I right or am I wrong? Anybody can answer that?
I would say that's a fair statement.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, Susan, we had three. So a motion passes.
Just get a clarification, what the vote was? It was 4-3?
Yeah, 4-3.
4-3.
Okay. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will hand it back to you. We did not do your mayor's updates. We did do the next common council meeting change, and then back to number eight.
Awesome. Thank you, Council President, for covering for me there. I appreciate it. All right, so we're on then to item number eight, Plan Commission, a public hearing on request to exceed the as-of-right 35-foot height limit in the B4 Central Business District for a proposed elevator hoistway at Port Hotel 101 East Main Street, James Reed and Port Hotel LLC applicants. I'll call that hearing to order. Notice has been given. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? All right, seeing none. Mr. Crane, you moved there, you got me excited, I thought you were going to speak. All right, is there anyone like to speak against? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Okay, the hearing is now closed, and we'll move into 8A2, consideration of possible action on a special exemption request to exceed the as-of-right away 35-foot height limit in the B4 Central Business District for the proposed elevator hoistway at Port Hotel 101 East Main Street, James Reed and Port Hotel LLC. Am I giving this to Rob or Bob or?
I'll take it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Bob, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the last remaining approval element, at least through Plan Commission, for the efforts to revitalize and reopen the Port Hotel. And this is the special height approval to accommodate a proposed elevator hoistway. The hoistways you can see, more likely in the south elevation here, is to really make the hotel itself accessible, more accessible, more accessible, and also to open up the, the rooftop for a rooftop deck. The, as we all know, 35 feet is the by right height in the B4, otherwise known as the downtown zoning district. But the, the height is, anything over 35 feet, up to 61 feet, just requires this backstop through the public hearing process and council approval. And so as you can see on the drawings, the elevator hoistway is that colored element, primarily facing on the south elevation, and would rise approximately, as I can tell, 53 feet above the, above the, the grade. And Mr. Reed is here, he is the, one of the project developers and the project architect. And if he has any, if you have any questions, he can provide them. Otherwise, the staff recommendations to allow for that elevator hoistway, as shown.
It was reviewed at Planning Commission, and we, we passed it through with, we had extensive questions about architectural design and review, so we appreciated that support and your ability to answer those questions for us. Any questions or comments for Bob? Mr. Sigwar?
This will become, I believe, the third tall iconic structure in the city that has been, it's private, okay? The, the B is out of Smith Brothers on the neon sign above the Duluth Trading. I don't know whose responsibility that is, I have no idea, but I think it's important that it be fixed, right? Number two, we're going to have a silo, I call it a silo, I don't know what else it is, above the Inventors Brew, Brew Pub 2.0. I'd like some assurances that that's going to be maintained. If it's going to become iconic, it's going to be lit, it's going to be visible from everywhere in the universe, apparently. And third, this is, the rendering you have, Jim, is absolutely beautiful schooner. I'm sure it's going to be, it's not going to be tile, it's going to be painted, right? Most likely? Just out of question, it's painted, right? So I'd like to see some sort of an agreement with the developer and the owner of the hotel, that it will be maintained. Because it's going, it's real high, it's beau, it looks like it's going to be beautiful, but I also think it's going to show its age and will need to be upgraded. So however we can do that, I'd like to see that happen.
So the question the mayor is posing to me is whether this body can impose a condition on the approval, on the height exception, that would capture, I guess, the thought that with respect to any painted or decorative stylized drawing, that that be maintained over a period of time. I'm restating the question so I can come up with an answer, because I, I would say I don't, let's break it down this way. I don't think there's anything in the special exception provisions of the zoning ordinance that contemplate that. Bob, do you know off the top of your head if there's a, in a subject to conditions clause? I thought it was an up or down.
Yeah, not related to, like, the sign maintenance and, and, in all fairness, I think that logo, and Mr. Reed, correct me if I'm wrong, that's kind of a placemaker, or a placeholder for now. But real, you know, but as far as granting the, the height, there's no, no, is the short answer to your question.
And is this, is this, I don't, I don't know this, so I have to ask, but is perhaps to you, Bob, a very obvious question, is this project coming back for any subsequent approvals?
No.
This is it?
This is it, yeah.
Well, all of that said, I, other than the architect, I don't know, is there a developer's representative here?
That would be me.
That's, you as well?
Yeah, I'm.
Oh, okay.
Building owner, yeah.
Okay. I mean, so I can ask it this way, is that something you'd be amenable to?
Of course, we're.
A, a maintenance agreement to that effect with respect to, is, is that drawing?
Let me explain it. I mean, this will be a, a piece of sign art, and it's very likely that the best way for us to accomplish that will be to have it digitally printed in a permanent fashion, like a billboard is, and it will be, you know, because it's over 40 feet above the ground, it's going to be attached to the, to the side of the, of the hoistway. So if it needs to be maintained, it's very likely it would just simply be removed and replaced.
Which, if, well, the opportunity to make a motion is here, but I, I, I would just, I guess I'd be concerned about putting a condition on you for the future. If you change restaurants or businesses, what does that do for us? Do then, we then have to approve everything the guy does to his building from that point forward on that, that elevator tower? I mean, I, John, I, I understand the spirit of your concern. It is disheartening when you see Smith Rose, but, I mean, I don't, I don't know that, you know, in 1948, when they put that up there, a council would have held them to a standard. And, and to me, it sounds more like it's a sign issue, so, I mean, either way, I, I love the spirit of it. So the floor is still open for debate or a motion?
Just a, just a point, I would think, if I may.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, isn't that something that perhaps could be handled by our building codes or something like that, that places are supposed to be? codes or something like that, that places are supposed to be kept, kept up well? And if there were problems with, on any building, the building inspector is allowed to require...
That's correct. And what the mayor said, in the end, it's a sign, and, you know, sign approvals are through my office.
Mr. Sigwar. In conclusion, that for the mayor, your comment about it being a digital representation of fine art is adequate for me. I thought it was going to be painted on the building.
It's hard to get a painter to go up there and paint.
So it would be, it would be like a billboard, but of finer quality and type thing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
And it probably would be a painter that would do the work. I mean, we have a very talented graphic artist, a local guy, and he'd be creating the image, and then it magically gets printed onto a amazing piece of vinyl canvas and attached to the building.
Yeah, I know. Counsel? Thank you, Mayor. So if any applicant, in this case, Mr. Reed on behalf of the developer, agrees to the suggestion, it's not a condition of approval if you agree to it. It may need to be looked at going forward if the building is sold and someone else takes ownership, but I'll ask Mr. Reed outright, this is not the place to negotiate these kinds of things, but here it is, here we are. Is that something you're agreeable to do?
If that's what the city wants, I don't see any problem with that.
Okay, so it wouldn't be a condition of approval, it would be an understanding with your agreement on behalf of the developer to do that. All right.
Sure.
I'll move to approve the special exception request.
There's a motion and a second, and a second and a second. Are there any other questions or concerns about the motion? Mr. Gasper?
Just to note, I'm going to continue my, I think this is a great project, I have no problem with all, I'm going to continue my protest against our 35-foot buildings restriction, because at this site, 35 foot is a stupid number, and, you know, this shouldn't be needed to come to the council for this. So I'm going to vote no, just in protest of the fact that we have a 35-foot limit here.
Ms. Postle?
I just want to thank you for creating this and putting in an elevator. For those people who have difficulty climbing stairs, they will be able to enjoy a rooftop venue, so thank you.
Thank you. I echo that. That's a key part of our strategic plan, is to increase accessibility for our whole community, so we're happy with that. All right, so there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Moving on. Congratulations and good luck with your business. We're very excited for it.
Yeah, we are too, thank you.
Especially if you stay open after council meetings. All right, so the next thing then would be new business, presentation of the southeastern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission Sewer PAC on Housing Affordability Report.
I will, as the, you know, the Zoom link is warming up, I will just make a brief introduction.
The tubes.
And so, as some of you may know, this was back in 2018, there was legislation that asked, not asked, but required cities and villages with a population of 10,000 persons or over to prepare a housing affordability report and have that posted on their website. Not being a housing expert or not having a terrible amount of housing experience, I took Sewer PAC up on their offer and asked them to draft the city's housing affordability report, and graciously, they accepted. And so, this was pre-COVID, and then I think, you know, we, you know, there was a little bit of a lull due to our friend, our friends with the, in COVID, but I'm happy to announce that Sewer PAC has prepared that report, and I'm also grateful that they've agreed to make a very brief presentation on this report, probably in the range of, you know, five to 10 minutes, and just summarizing of the findings for this report. So I think they're, I think they're up and running, and I'll leave it off to Catherine Sobotky and Ben McKay, I think Ben is here, if it's not just Kathy, as part of, they are in the Sewer PAC's land use division, and they've been really helpful, and I thank them for the work that they've done for us.
Excellent. And Kathy, if you, if you don't know, your camera's not on, and as she, as it's warming up, I'd ask that, one of the things I was going to ask if I got here in time before, Bob, through your staff report and this report, is I'd like the city to engage in creating an infograph around the data that's found in here. While that data is lagging, I think it's going to be critical for us moving forward when we're looking at density of affordable housing in the different sides of town, as we potentially have more industry coming to the north side, and then increasing that, as well as even just looking at the current numbers out of the last census update that we saw in the strategic plan, because I think this is really important information for us to make sure that, as we're looking at future development agreements and working with people, that we are taking into consideration, you know, as Port Washington continues to grow and our homes are getting larger and larger, that we are highly conscious of the fact that if we're going to maintain an industrial base and grow that, that we need those pieces sold. Is that okay? Thank you. Kathy, you are on.
I'll leave it up to Ben there.
Thank you, Kathy. Hopefully everybody can hear me, and I am sharing my screen. I'm not sure if you guys are seeing the presentation or not.
We are, Ben. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Ben McKay, I'm Sewer PAC Deputy Director, and Kathy Sobotky is with us as well this evening. She is Principal Specialist with Sewer PAC and the one responsibly for drafting a report and including all the information that was being discussed earlier at the very beginning of the meeting. I think that Bob did a good job of introducing, you know, why these reports are being done. There was legislation passed in 2018, it's section 66.10013, the Wisconsin statutes, so that does require these housing affordability reports to be developed and posted on a community's website, and this statute does apply to cities and villages with populations of 10,000 people or more. Also, what should be included in the report, and there's some pretty extensive requirements for information, although I will note that Sewer PAC has, I guess, and has also discussed earlier in the meeting, in its Sewer PAC way, included some additional information that hopefully will be helpful to the community. The report should include information about recent new development in the community, also areas available for residential development or redevelopment potentially, and then impacts of regulations on cost of residential development. Sewer PAC is providing this assistance to a number of communities across the region. Meeting and being able to get together with communities has been a little bit difficult due to COVID, as Bob alluded to, but we do have this report drafted now. We have been providing this assistance really as a way to communicate regional housing plan recommendations to communities across the region. Those regional housing plan recommendations are the basis of our Sewer PAC analyses when we're looking at the impacts of regulations on cost of residential development as required by the statutes, and I believe one of the public commenters noted during the public comment session that the regional housing plan was adopted by the commission in 2013. So the report consists basically of four chapters. The first was the introductory chapter, which was on the slide that I just showed. There's also an existing conditions chapter, as well as a housing demand chapter, and then a, and then the analysis of development regulations is in chapter four. So I'm just going to go over three slides, one for each chapter, really highlighting the conclusions that we found when we looked at background information, as well as community regulations. So chapter two is existing conditions, and kind of this corresponding page in a report to this slide is page number 12 in a report. And here, Kathy did gather a lot of extensive information on existing land use, and that's actually what's shown on the map on the screen, is existing land use in the city from the commission's 2015 land use inventory, which is the most recent regional land use inventory that we have completed. And as well, there's a lot of information about housing stock, demographic, and economic characteristics, too, that I think actually reflected quite a bit of what some of the, what was said during the public comment period. Just a couple of the highlights, there is some existing open and ag land at the outskirts of the community that could potentially see residential development, as well as a few infill vacant lots around the community, as I think was just discussed and was discussed earlier in the meeting as well. There's significant industrial development and commercial development in the city that may create a demand for housing. Looking at some of the things like vacancy rates, the rental vacancy rate is in a range recommended by HUD, which is about 4% to 6% vacancy rate to provide for adequate choiciness in the community. The latest numbers we had from the American Community Survey, which is a product of the census that comes out intermittently between decennial censuses and has a lot more information in it, looked like the rental vacancy rate was about 4%, which is at the low range of what's recommended by HUD, but is within that range. Also, it's interesting, the ACS data, and we looked at a couple vintages, I think, there were no vacant units for sale in the city. Of course, there were probably occupied units for sale. Going all the way back to the 2010 decennial census, looked like there was a less than 2% vacancy rate for homeowner units in the city, so that certainly, I think, shows some demand for additional housing, as has been discussed throughout tonight's meeting. Monthly homeowner costs and rental costs, so, you know, the mortgages and the rents in the city are lower than Ozaki County as a whole, although there are more homeowners with a high housing cost burden than the county as a whole, high housing cost burden being defined as cost, housing cost of over 30% of a household's income. And also looking at some of the data in the report, 33% of the community's households do have incomes below $45,000. So looking at regional housing plan analyses, those households could benefit from things like new multifamily housing, and there are about 25% of the city's population with household incomes between $45,000 and $75,000, who might be able to benefit from potentially smaller, single-family homes on smaller lots, hopefully more affordable than their larger counterparts. And again, some other interesting information in this chapter is about the city's age distribution. Certainly could result in a demand for a variety of housing, whether it is younger families that may need the larger home, or whether it's our aging population, which is increasing in the city, the county, the state, and really the nation, could benefit from things like multifamily housing, where many of the new housing units, at least those built after the early 90s due to federal and state fair housing laws, are required to have some minimal accessibility features, such as wider doorways, for instance, to accommodate wheelchairs, and as well, maybe again, this smaller, single-family housing could reduce things like maintenance burden for some of our households. Moving on to chapter three, housing demand, again, this is information that is required by the state statutes to talk about recent development activity, look at undeveloped parcels in the community, and then talk about existing demand and forecast demand, and hopefully some of that information that I talked about from chapter two, existing conditions, really sort of informed some of the information in this chapter about housing demand. The city did provide us with information that there was 150 undeveloped parcels zoned for residential use, and those were shown on green on the map on this slide, as well as 28 additional undeveloped parcels, not necessarily zoned for residential use, but could have the potential for residential use. There are anywhere from 6,000 to 6,400 households projected for City of Port Washington, depending on kind of what plan you're looking at. The city's year 2035 plan, which I know is significantly updated in November, and actually designed or brought back to the year 2030, had identified actually 6,000 households could be in the city by the year 2035. Looking at the regional plan, Vision 2050, the long-range regional land use and transportation plan, that plan does identify the potential for up to 6,400 households projected for the sewer service area that includes the city of Port Washington. Demand for affordable single-family housing again, and multifamily housing, I think, is also shown by the regional housing plan job housing balance analysis. Not to spend too much time on this, this was a pretty complex analysis that was done for about 90 sewered communities across the seven-county southeastern Wisconsin region, where essentially we analyzed communities' comprehensive plans that were existing at the time. Again, this analysis was done probably about 10 years ago, so it predates the major update that was done in November to the city's comprehensive plan. But at the time, again, we analyzed the city's comprehensive plan, and I think, as was discussed at earlier points in tonight's meeting, there were significant industrial jobs in particular, I think, but maybe other business parks jobs that could be accommodated if that plan were be implemented, so I think that might be driving some potential demand for the more affordable, smaller, single-family homes on smaller lots, and potentially multifamily housing as well. And again, the last bullet point here, the aging population is an extremely important statistic to look at, again, not only in the City of Port Washington, but across the entire county and state, as we just talked about, could create demand for multifamily housing and smaller, single-family housing. Final chapter, looking at an analysis of the community's development regulations. Again, the state statutes really wanted these, they're really specific about looking at how development regulations might impact the cost of developing new subdivisions, so largely single-family housing. Again, because Sewer PAC staff wanted to communicate some of the regional housing plan recommendations to communities throughout the region through this process, we included some information about multifamily housing here as well. So looking at things like the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, the one that existed when we actually put this together, and as significantly amended in November, the minimum lot sizes and minimum home sizes can be accommodated by both the ordinance and the plan, so those recommendations are being met, as well, you know, the ability to do PUD exists. And again, I did a brief overview of the comprehensive plan amendment today, and it did look like the community certainly considered some areas, it could be smart growth areas where potentially there was some underutilized commercial or industrial space, and maybe a focus for new residential development could be in those areas. And as well, something the community could do if it hasn't already done it, would be to think about accessory dwelling units in single-family zoned areas as potential housing for aging population, or maybe even workforce housing. And again, looking at multifamily housing, the densities and minimum unit sizes recommended by the regional housing plan are accommodated by the city's ordinances and comprehensive plan. As well, looking at parking requirements, Kathy did find that maybe there's some flexibility that the community can look at there. Parking can be extremely expensive. We found studies showing $5,000 to $10,000 per stall for just kind of ground-level surface parking, going up to maybe $25,000 per stall for structured parking, and maybe even all the way up to $50,000 per stall for underground parking that you might find at a larger multifamily development. So with that, those are kind of the high-level conclusions of the plan, there is a lot, or I'm sorry, of the report, there's a lot of information in the report, however, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any at this time. Just one additional item to point out, the regional housing plan is available on the Sewer PAC website at www.sewrpc.org, if you are interested in taking a look at that, and the 50 plan recommendations that I think were also mentioned earlier in today's meeting.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from counsel? Did you mic?
Sure.
Mr. Gasper?
Just one, since this is required to be an annual report, and this is the 2020 report, is the 2021, 2022, and 2023 versions of this coming before January 31st of next year?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I do recall that was brought up earlier in a meeting. So it did take us some time to put together this report, as was noted, it's extensive. What some of our other communities have done, and we've done these same extensive reports for other communities, is once they've posted their original report, they've basically looked at what kind of development has happened over then the next calendar year, and posted some supplemental information about the development activity in the community that's happened over, again, the next year after the original report was posted. So, you know, I thought that that was a good strategy to handle it, because this is a lot of work to do on an annual basis. And I think something else that could be recommended would be not only looking at would be not only looking at what kind of development has happened in the community over the year, but if there were any major, major things like, you know, the comprehensive plan amendment that happened in November, that certainly could mention, or there would be any major, you know, zoning ordinance amendments or anything like that that would affect affordability. And I think, you know, at points when a significant amount of new, like census data comes out, or maybe after a five-year period, maybe a more extensive update could be done. But I think something probably should be posted on the city's website every year.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Mr. Turney?
Just one, quick one. It may not be a quick one. But have you seen any evidence? Or has there been any studies out there? If a community makes an effort to build more senior housing, does that have the cascading effect of opening up other homes as people, you know, two people living in a five-bedroom house, like my wife and I, move into something like that and then put that house on the market? Is that, is there almost like a cost benefit to that, I guess?
Yeah, so I think, you know, that kind of falls into the broader category, the theory of filtering, where essentially, as you build new versions of housing, you know, and senior housing certainly might attract somebody to move out of their existing home or even existing apartment. But as you build new housing stock, say you build new multifamily housing, and even if it's, you know, if it's kind of the luxury multifamily housing that we see a lot of times being built today that might attract somebody who is currently living in a community in an apartment that would like, you know, maybe an upgrade, but is not necessarily wanting to buy a single-family home, that might open up more affordability in some of the older units in the community that would obviously tend to be more affordable to residents than new development. And then the same theory would hold true for single-family housing.
That's a great question. Ben, any others? Ben, I have four for you real quick. One is, we're going to send you Eric Curtin Canvas. He's a local photographer. So we'll send you a Port Washington sunrise for behind you. Two is, just to help us, you know, promote our awesome community. Ben, I'm wondering if there's two things you could work with Bob on. One is, I would really appreciate if this presentation could be given to the Port Washington Saukville School Board. When we talk about increasing in density of housing, it has impact on our local schools and which neighborhoods we apply those in, just to ensure that the school district can proactively anticipate any different shifts in population, especially if we move towards, you know, strategically looking at multifamily homes, et cetera. That would be really, really important. And then the other one is to sit down and potentially do this presentation with local realtors and developers to get their feedback on this as well. I think one of the fascinating components is right now, you can't buy a home in Port Washington, and we can't build them fast enough. So it'll be very interesting to hear their perspectives of this, as well as developers, as we're looking at, you know, the vacant lands that are available. And then the last thing I would just ask the city staff is, again, if we can create that infogram, but in the meantime, if we could link this to our webpage, the city's webpage, and then interested parties on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram can share it. So thank you very much for your time tonight, Ben and Bob.
Thank you. I'd be happy to work with you, Bob, to set up those presentations.
Okay. Will do. And Ben, thanks so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the work you do at Sewer PAC.
Mayor, I just have one question. What is our fee to Sewer PAC annually today? I mean, I remember what it used to be when we were assessed by Sewer PAC, but what is it today, Tony?
I think that's based upon his look. You'll get an email in the morning.
Thank you. And this is part of the service. This is the oldest plan commission in the country. I think everybody should understand that. They have data that all of our developers rely on, right, Ian? Right? And it's very thorough. I spent three hours on the report, and I got to tell you, there isn't anything that isn't in there. Okay? So it's very, very helpful, and it will really help us as we create our new zoning code. Because, Ben, one quick, is he still on? Yeah, you still there, Ben?
Yeah, I'm still here.
One quick comment was that the study found that City of Port Washington offers, our zoning code, I should say, offers a full range of housing adequately. So we don't want to lose that when we modify our code. But, you know, years ago, when Birchwood Hills came in, what, about 1980, Rob? Right around there? Okay? I thought we were going to have forty-five-foot lots with nine-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot homes. I was wrong. Just the opposite happened. We started building McMansions on huge pieces of property, okay? Now we're reverting back, and I take, for example, the subdivision on Division Street, which has occupiable accessory buildings on the lots, above garages, et cetera, in our code. So we're ahead, we're getting caught up again.
Yeah. And again, I think that's the power of this infogram we've put together. Because like you, I mean, if you go through and you highlight all of these statistics in here, it's pretty fascinating. So thank you for that, Mr. Sigwar. Two things, I didn't hear you say in 1970, because thirty-three percent of the homes in Port were built after 1970. And we did all hear you say you were wrong, so we appreciate that, too. Tony, did you find the dollar amount? No? Okay. All right. Moving on, Rob? Update on the North Breakwater Light Station and anticipated timeline for design and restoration? And thanks for doing this.
Okay. So I've been working with Legacy Architecture, who in August of 2017 put together a very comprehensive report on the condition of the lighthouse. And so I have been working with them on taking the next step forward, which is design a biddable set of documents for public construction to construct the improvements that they're recommending in that report. We'll be meeting with them, where they're permitting, on March 23rd to review the current condition of the lighthouse and to, or the light station, I should say, and to have the various disciplines. That would be mechanical and structural. Engineers view the lighthouse firsthand. That is step one. Step two is obtaining the grant funds, which I'm happy to say, we have every indication that we're going to be awarded a forty-thousand-dollar grant from Wisconsin Coastal Management. The bad news is their fiscal calendar begins July 1st, and so the earliest we'd be able to begin work is July 1st. It is likely sometime after that because it does take some time to, for them to to submit the award agreement to the city because of various federal restrictions that we need to go through, environmental documents, et cetera. So, yeah. Our last coastal management grant, which was for Heart of the Harbor, we did not see the, we did not see the grant agreement until October. So, but I have talked to Legacy, and they feel that they could still squeeze in design prior to bidding in January, February. But again, some of that could be weather-dependent because I'm certain that anyone who's going to bid on the project would want to inspect the lighthouse, and we would have to do that on a, again, when the weather permitted it. But that's the intent, is to have it designed and ready to go for winter or early spring bidding next year for construction next year.
Questions for Rob? I just have a couple, real quick. One is, with the July 1st deadline for the grant application, do we have any precedent set of accelerating that by putting at-risk city funds to supplant or reimburse ourselves later so that they can get moving on that? I don't know who I'm asking that question, but...
Normally, you're not allowed to begin until the award is, the agreement is signed.
Because you can't pay yourself back off the grant?
Right.
Okay. And then, I just, seeing this on here, I really appreciate this, Rob, and I appreciate your time with Tony to meet around this. But one of the pieces, we have this quick claim deed for the city with the federal government, and I went, I've gone through this a bunch of times, and I just want to make sure that the council recognizes our liability here because eventually, we're going to have to figure out a way to pay for this. So an agreement was made in 2018 that the City of Port Washington would maintain and preserve the lighthouse until December 17th, 2042, which sounds like a really long way, but it's not. But we did take on the obligation and liability to make sure that that lighthouse was pristine and preserved. I didn't, I went down there, I can't, dude, we ever erect a sign? One of the things in the agreement was that we would acknowledge that the federal government has gifted us this beautiful lighthouse for X amount of years, and it said we would have a sign out there. So I just get worried when we have contracts like that. Third thing on here in the agreement, and this is really for you, Alderman Newmeyer, is that we're prohibited from playing sheep's head or euchre out there or gambling on the property. I noticed that in there. However, however weirdly, we can have raffles, games of chance, and bingo on the property. Trivia nights, yeah. We're also supposed to submit a two-year report to the federal government and the Army Corps of Engineers on the condition, what we've done and any revenues that we've generated as a result. And then we will maintain and preserve and repair to its intended condition. And then I think one thing, Rob pointed this out, is one thing that could slow all this down is we have to coordinate with the Army Corps of Engineers on every action we take. So again, if we get the grant and we put city funds in place, I hope that when we, and I know this was a hurried piece back in 18, but when we would, when we take on liabilities like this, we should put funding aside immediately so that in our carryover, our fund balance or city coffers, we have the dollars to maintain this. And then my last question, Rob, and I don't know if this is something that DPW needs to go look at, but is there, is there any way we can just clean it? So when we went out there to inspect it this summer, what we see from, what we see from the shoreline, you believe to be rust, but it's not. It's like, it's like lichen. It's just a thick plant on there. And I recognize that we can't just use, like, you know, scrub-a-dub lighthouse service to clean off our lighthouse. But I'm wondering if there's any possible way just to do that because it wore a lot over the winter. And when you see our, the daily photographs of the lighthouse, you can almost do a time lapse of it getting darker and darker. So it, even if we can just clean it up and put inch-thick plexiglass in the portholes instead of blue canvas and stuff as we wait to fully do the whole piece, I think that would be fantastic. So thank you for that. And again, just moving forward, I think it's important for us as a council to, if we take on liabilities, we put the funds aside so we're never in this position again because we have an obligation till 2042. Anything else? Okay. Then we're going to move on to 10C, Consideration and Possible Action on CGI Digital Agreement to Participate in Community Showcase Video Program. The staff recommendation is that we should approve the agreement to participate in the component. Staff recommends approving it so that we can do it, and there is a recommended motion there. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will briefly introduce the item and then turn it over to Andrea Tempio from CGI Digital. So CGI Digital is a partner of the National League of Cities and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Recently, they've worked with the league to produce a series of videos promoting their organization. And what is being offered to the City of Port Washington is to participate in the statewide video program. And to do this, and what that entails, is shooting four videos, and one of which would be an intro video. And then the three are topics of the city's choosing. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Andrea, if she is on Zoom.
I am here. Hello.
Hello.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I am glad to be here and able to share this, the details of this program with you all. I was going to jump right into it and share an example, like I had done with our previous call, and just answer any questions that anyone may have. So, yes, we work with the league. We just completed a series of videos. We work with over fifty communities in the state of Wisconsin because we're also a partner with the Wisconsin Counties Association. We're a video production company, and what we do is we work with thousands of cities and counties across the country. In addition to the National League of Cities, we're also partnered with the U.S. Conference of Mayors and with the National Association of Counties. So our program is centered around using videos to help promote growth within cities by showcasing everything that that community has to offer to ultimately help achieve many initiatives. They're very much customized to the community that we're working with. So videos to help promote tourism, to drive in new residents, to promote economic development and drive in new businesses, or really using the videos as a platform for various initiatives to really kind of share, even with residents, you know, something new about the community. It really is entirely up to you. What we had proposed to create for the City of Port Washington were four videos, an intro video, like you mentioned, and then three additional videos that would be based on topics chosen by the city and who we're working with there. Each video could be anywhere from thirty seconds to two minutes in length, really just going to depend on the style of video that you're looking for, and each one can differ. Our production team does all of the work, so we provide the necessary staff and create all of the content or build from the content, write the scripts, do all of the filming, the editing, voiceover, and the music, and it's fully completed and produced by your team with CGI. The city, however, is in complete control over every aspect of the project. So you're approving everything that your production team with CGI Digital is doing, and ultimately, you're going to sign off on final approval, and the videos are provided to the city through a link that is very seamlessly added to the city's homepage. And that design that would launch the videos, we completely designed for you, so it's cohesive with your homepage. And I'm going to show you a couple of examples, if that's okay, and I can share my screen. Let me just do that. Okay. So I'm going to show you, this is just our website, and it has who we're partnered with. I'm going to bring you to one of our partners in Wisconsin, the city of Superior. So this is their homepage, and this is their, the link that launches our video program on their website. When you click on the link, launches the program, and I can play their intro video with their mayor.
On the head of Lake Superior, largest of the Great Lakes, you'll find the city of Superior waiting to welcome you home. I'm Mayor Jim Payne, and I'm thrilled to welcome you to our great community. This exciting and vibrant place truly has something for everyone. The impressive school district, job training programs, colleges and universities present limitless opportunities for all ages. The business community is full of progressive and creative thinkers, as well as a dedicated and highly educated workforce that puts words into action. As Wisconsin's energy capital, Superior's international trade is vital to the state as well as the country. And for recreation, Lake Superior is nothing short of perfect. Offering world-class arts and entertainment, year-round blockbuster events, and the beauty of our namesake, no matter what brings you here, we guarantee you'll find exactly what you're looking for. Because in Superior, Wisconsin, we live up to our name.
Okay. So I wanted to share just a quick intro video and then share some of the other topics that we had done for Superior, what they chose to highlight about their city. So I wanted to get into what makes this program so unique for the communities you work with. First and foremost, the fact that the majority of the work is done with your production team, so it's not taking a lot of staff time and resources. It is certainly a big part of it. We know how busy our community partners are and how busy their staff is, and to take on another big project sometimes is daunting. So that alleviates cities of that concern because, again, we are doing all of the work. You're really just overseeing it and approving it as we go. The other important factor in what this makes this program so successful and works so well with all communities, large and small, is the fact that we've alleviated any concern as far as cost. This program is entirely cost-free. Every city, the thousands of cities and counties and villages and towns that we've worked with, since this program has existed and all over the country, has never cost them anything. So the design model we have, and I'm going to show you a completed project, just started doing the outreach in Superior. But for Sun Prairie, this is the video link that's on their homepage. Looks entirely different, so it just shows you again how that's custom to your website. And when you launch their video program, same format, same dashboard, same interface, we'd like to call it. But this, what you'll see, is a completed program. This is where you're going to find all of those businesses in Sun Prairie that were all of those businesses in Sun Prairie that wanted to be represented alongside their city as part of this tour of their community. So, it creates, brings commerce and community together. It creates that private and public partnership. But how we offset the cost is the opportunity that it presents to your local businesses in being featured. And they're featured through videos as well. So, we reach out and give them the opportunity for us to create a video that they can own and use on their own website and having it represent them here. So, if you click on, for example, this, you know, just details, and you're going to find...
From SUVs to RVs, just details, cleans, polishes...
I'm not going to play the entire thing just for the sake of time, but you get the idea and you can see, click on any of these business logos. Some may just even link to their website. Um, so it's not that they're required to do a video and all of them will be different lengths and different styles and types of videos, um, and the cost to them adjusts. So, they pay for their video. Um, they own it, like I said, it's hosted for them on their own business website. They're able to use it on all of their social media channels, as can the city with the video program too. Uh, it's not limited to just being linked off of the city website. Um, but the businesses are able to take advantage of that as well. The cost of the businesses, or I'm sorry, the, the businesses' participation in this opportunity, we, we see a, a very strong response, like you see in Sun Prairie, where all 20 spots will be filled up and more, um, because it creates more opportunity with each video we create for you. Um, but really what makes this such a successful opportunity for communities is the, is, is the fact that it's not contingent. Um, the videos are promised free to the city and that it's not contingent and any business is participating. So, every single business in the City of Port Washington could say no to this opportunity and you would still receive all four of your videos produced at no cost. It's stated in our agreement. So, there is truly no catch. Um, as long as you are happy to have that opportunity presented to your businesses, which we do as well, uh, we have an account executive team. They're assigned to work in the various communities that we partner with. They're responsible for meeting with you, um, and then meeting individually with as many businesses as they can to share this opportunity with them. They can sign up at any time as well. Um, there isn't a set timeframe, so if someone moves in or opens up a business later on, you know, they can, they can join the program at that time. Um, and, uh, the other thing is it's, it's, uh, no cost to your nonprofit organizations. So, we reach out to the nonprofit organizations, the business associations, um, within the community and they are provided with a link to their logo or their, their logo here with the direct link to their website. So, they're not getting a video produced for them at no cost, but they are getting a spot on this program. They are being represented, um, through this initiative and there is no charge to them. So, um, that, I'm going to stop right there because I think questions will have, I'm sure will bring up more details. Um, so I wanted to kind of open it up to any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Gasper?
Sure. Um, so it says the videos will remain available on our website, um, until the third anniversary of the accepted video, uh, and as being a duration of the agreement. Uh, what happens at that point?
So, you can do the partnership. So, at the end of the three years, um, we reach out usually three to four months before the contract expires, and we give you the opportunity to renew our partnership. And basically, that means we're just kind of really starting all over, not entirely from scratch. We're not going to be, uh, producing, I mean, we're producing new video content, but we're not having to start from scratch. We have content, we have a lot of knowledge in, um, uh, footage and B-roll already from our last video program. So, with the renewal, we work together all over again. We come back, we edit, update, refresh all of your video content. We really can do as much or as little as necessary. So, um, that includes new shoot dates. It includes even changing out some of your video topics. So, maybe there's a topic that we chose to, that you choose this time around, and in three years, maybe you want to switch it out with something else. We can do that. Um, all of that is, is, is done and it continues at no cost. So, it just basically renews and refreshes our partnership, new content. And for, since the, since this program started, well, we've been around much longer, but the video tour program itself in 2003, so we had, had city clients since that time that just continue and renew every three years.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Can I, can I ask why we're a selected community? Um, I'm, this dovetails nicely with our strategic planning, but why were we selected?
Well, for a lot of reason. Uh, well, we do a lot of research, um, and to, we work with, in all 50 states. So, uh, we've kind of spread out our territory. We certainly take a lot of care with the city, um, the state leagues that we're partnered with, um, Wisconsin, of course, being one of them. Um, we really want, so every year, we can only reach out to typically five cities in each state that we will film. Um, so we're pretty strategic in how we do that outreach, um, whether or not we've ever contacted you about this program. Um, you know, for a lot of cities, kind of doing some research into, you know, what story do you have to tell? Is there something, whether it's an anniversary, you know, 250-year anniversary or something happening? So, there's a lot that goes into it. Um, I don't exactly know all of the, the reasons why Port Washington was chosen, but we also look at them, um, the state as to, who do we already work with and what parts of the state have we not contacted, communities within that, that section of the state. We also, unfortunately, there is, um, we do have some parameters as far as the size of the communities that we can work with because there does have to be, um, some businesses there for us to potentially offset our costs. So, it typically, we only offer this program to, uh, to communities, um, of over 10,000, 8,000 population.
Thanks. Just curious, I'm glad to show off the community. That's just curious why, what criteria we had to meet to participate, so.
Well, I'm, Andrea, the simple answer was we're awesome.
You know what? I should have just started with that.
Yeah. You had us at awesome. Mr. Sigwar?
Yes, you're awesome.
Yeah, could you give us a, uh, a range of fee for the local businesses if they would participate, you know, from 50,000 to 5,000?
Certainly, yes. Absolutely, absolutely. So, we have a, really a shopping list of products and services. So, you know, early on, it was all video and then, of course, hosting on their website and things like that. We've certainly expanded our, um, products and services since then. So, it's, video is certainly a major component and offering even video reviews or video testimonials, video commercials and different ones. Um, but also SEO, we offer just creating websites for small businesses, designing logos or redesigning logos, um, even small rebrands for businesses. We do, um, content creation, social media campaigns, uh, and graphics and so forth. So, the products range anywhere from $250 to, I would say, in standard, 6,000. That's probably the most, the, the range where everything's in. However, certain businesses may exceed that, you know, if they have multiple businesses or they want multiple videos, or they want a big package with video plus SEO. So, it can range higher than that, but I will tell you that between 250 to about 6,000 is, is the cost that most businesses are within, that range.
Mr. Bennet?
One more.
Oh, go ahead, John.
Would your, would your videographer go outside the city limits for a corporation that had different locations?
Oh, 100%, absolutely. Mm-hmm. Yep. And the businesses that we would reach out to can be outside the community is, that, those parameters are set by the city. So, you would let our account executive know and our videographer know what content you would want, what, um, but yes, we would absolutely film a business outside of the city.
Mr. Bennet?
Andrea, you said you generally do an interview overview and then three additional videos. What if we wanted a fourth one? Would there be a cost to the city to do a fourth one?
No. So, I, this happened actually just a, a week ago with a city that asked us to add another video topic, uh, on workforce recruitment because they're struggling and they want, really needed something to focus on that. Um, and we said yes. It, we never turn away a community that, that wants more, and there would be no cost to that.
Okay. And I'm just thinking our four strategic focus areas is those four videos.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
I was going to say, I mean, I can change the agreement to include five videos. That's fine. And I can adjust that and send that over.
That was easy.
So then it's not, if you, if you already know kind of what you're envisioning as far as content, I can make that change prior.
Alderman Terry?
Just a, um, have you ever used a, a video on like a Main Street program? Or is that something that you would want to do?
Yeah, um, so typically, this...
Sun Prairie is one.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, typically, the city spearheads, uh, the city or the county is typically who spearheads our, our program and who we have our contract with. Then, from there, we reach out to, um, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, Main Street, uh, Business District or Association, and let them know about this opportunity. They would get a spot on the program, like I mentioned, as far as, um, with their logo, with a link to their...